Of additional cost, is it going to make the home safer in the long run? Yes, it will. Is it going to make the homes unaffordable and probably unsustainable to a lot of people? Probably will do that, too. So you do have that cost factor. When we talk about somebody wanting to build a single-family home and to comply with the new energy code, for example, say they have to go to two-by-six walls. That means their walls are going to be, they have to use lumber that's six inches wide instead of the two-by-fours, which are closer to three-and-a-half inches. So now you've got to have an inch of airspace between that framing and your brick. So now possibly, instead of having to go with a 10-inch-wide foundation, you now have to go with a 12-inch-wide foundation. That's not like a $200 or $300 change item when you're building a house. It's probably more like a $2,000 or $3,000 change item. Perhaps Alderman Wood would know about that. He probably deals with that fairly regularly.
You're very close.
So, I mean, and then the other thing is, does requiring a certain amount of brick or masonry on every new house, will that create a certain sameness or a certain redundancy throughout town, which is, you know, again, are we doing an architectural appearance requirement for somebody? If somebody wanted to come in and build a traditional Cape Cod-type house, your traditional Cape Cod does not have brick or masonry on the front. So, I mean, there is a remedy in our code. If somebody wants relief from that, they would have to make an appearance in front of the Building Code Board of Appeals. But, you know, again, what are we, what are we trying to accomplish with it? And, you know, are we going to? I think our priorities and maybe some of our requirements may have changed over the last three or four or five years because of what's happened with the economy. So that's why staff, rather than recommend just pulling this out, we highlighted it. Number one, single-family residential. I think what would clarify this would, if we really want to leave that in there for single-family residentials, maybe require 25% of brick or stone on the front wall of the house, not on every wall. That might, that would help. So that's, you know, again, it's at the risk of being accused of being contractor-friendly. Probably the cost is the biggest hesitation that we have, and that's probably been the biggest complaint that we've heard from builders and developers. That's it.
Although, if we did just the front, I'm OK with them putting a little in the front, like maybe on each side, and then bringing along the sides of the home, or however the developer wants to do it to avoid what you mentioned, the design issues and that sort of things. So, I imagine they'd want it in the front, but. Alderman, you too, Wesley?
I'm willing to compromise on this one. I have no problem putting 25% in the front, and I think the reason why we did have this exactly because we were concerned. But we already had someone already challenges brick ordinance and did come to planning and zoning appeal, and it was overturned that they granted them the permission to change the brick ordinance. So we already had someone already challenges a developer.
Well, they didn't really challenge it. What they requested was a variation to be allowed to not have to comply to this.
Right.
So they requested the variation. They did follow their recourse, which they went to the Building Code Board of Appeals, and they were granted that. But there was a condition on that. They were looking for relief from having to put 25% brick and masonry around every wall. What they agreed to do was put the 25% on the front, and then they wrapped the corners, I think, back about four feet, because they were going to put a fence up and then that, at least. And then they also used a cement board. One of the big products in use today now is a cement, it's a siding that looks like wood siding, but it's actually made out of a cement board. Fireproof, lasts forever, and, you know, a lot of people are using that.
Alderman Woods?
As a builder, my biggest problem with this and what I've seen in other cities, municipalities, villages that try to enact a "you have to do this" type of approach with any design criteria, you know, whether a garage has to be out in front of a house or can't be facing the street, or you need brick, or has to have a porch, the tendency is all the houses start to look the same, for one. Two, as a designer, from a design aspect, John kind of touched on, if I want to build a true and traditional Cape Cod, they really don't have brick. A Victorian really doesn't have brick on it. I would be more, I mean, if we have to settle on 25% on the front elevation, I would ultimately go along with that. But I would rather see it that we change the front elevation, or however we develop that, to, that you have to include three different building materials on that elevation so that we break up those elevations and add interest. Ultimately, that could be brick and stone, fiber cement board, wood shakes into gables, you know, vinyl. Because what's going to happen is, they're going to spend the money that they have to on the foundation, they'll spend the money on the brick, and then they're going to put the cheapest siding they can, the vinyl siding, on the house with the matching corners that, to me, looks, well, less desirable, let's just say. And that's really what happens, and that's why I say that ultimately, everything starts looking the same. Because everybody, you make me spend money here, I'm going to save it over here. But if we come up with some concept of three different building materials need to be used to break it up and still keep creativity, I think that that would work better for the builders, the designers, and the city itself. Thank you.
Mr. Forrest, is there a way to describe what Alderman Woods said in this first? So eliminating the brick requirement and describing more of what Alderman Woods said?
Yeah, I think we can do that, and I'll make that revision, and we'll bring it back to you. Again, as I had mentioned earlier, Alderman Coles, we're anticipating going through chapters 10 to 22 on the May 10 committee meeting, so the couple of revisions or tweaks that we need to make to these first nine chapters, we can run over that real quickly at that meeting as well, so.
OK.
Yeah, let's see what we can come up with and see if that's acceptable.
And I'll just kind of look for input from the council on that as well. So, I mean, I believe that, you know, I am in agreement with Alderman Woods on that. Is anyone not in agreement and wants to see some type of brick requirement in item A?
I'm not in agreement with it. Because, you know what, we sat up here and we spent a lot of hours and a lot of days on putting this brick ordinance. Eliminate the brick totally, I'm not in favor of it. I'm sorry. Because you're looking at eliminating fire suppressions that's required now. I mean, I'm sorry, I cannot support that.
Any other input on this topic? Mr. Mayor?
John, real quick, I spoke to Ross. He went to that fair housing. We had a, I mean, real short conversation. There was that email I received that I forwarded over to you guys, and you sent Ross. And he was mentioning something about when we're doing these types of codes, if, maybe you can give us a little, because this might play into that.
All right, yes, Mr. Clicker, last week attended a seminar on an update of fair housing and fair housing law and building code implications and how they can all kind of enter into it. And I did have him give me a memo of sort of his opinion on what had gone on at that And the comment that he made, "We must carefully evaluate things that can be considered as aesthetic only," such as the brick requirement, "or items that although safe, added for safety, could be an extreme financial impact to developers, which in turn would be passed along to customers, sprinkler systems. These aesthetic and safety elements adversely impact fair housing by driving up the cost of construction in Wooddale to a point where we are effectively implementing a barrier to people moving into the community, we could be found in violation of fair housing law." So that was something that they did touch on at that seminar. It's nothing that, at this point, I'm not going to really lose any sleep over, because I don't think that we're in that scenario, but, you know, it's the area of litigation, so who knows? We just have to be very careful about the things that we require and be sure that they don't adversely impact.
Thanks, John. I just, I know Ross, I talked to him a couple of days ago, it was like 15-minute conversation. We went over a few things, and he brought this up, and I figured the council should know since we're talking about this right now.
Yeah, I talked about it as well, too, so. Well, I think if we look at that, I mean, using three different materials, I mean, very readily, those materials, one of those materials could be brick or stone.
Right, that's what I just mentioned, Alderman Eugene Wesley. So perhaps we would have one of the three a requirement that it's brick.
Yeah, I think as we move through here, I think the single-family requirement is really, the one that's probably been the biggest hot button as far as the multifamily residential, the commercial properties, the industrial properties, those type of builders and developers already typically plan on using those kind of materials anyway, so I don't really feel that's an issue.
OK, I'm going to call in Alderman Woods, and then we'll go into the next item. Alderman Woods?
I was just going to comment to Alderman Eugene Wesley's concern, given that they have the choice of choosing, you know, they have to choose three different materials on the elevation. Ultimately, a majority of them will choose brick and/or stone. I don't think that making that a requirement is going to completely eliminate brick, but it leaves you the design options to design different types of houses. I mean, there's, and as we develop it, I mean, we're sitting here, haven't built in a lot of communities, they have different, you know, demands on people. I mean, we could sit here for a whole year developing an outside facade program, but I think if we start with this and keep the flexibility, which covers issues that John's talking about with the affordable housing, I think it'll help to keep us out of trouble also. Thank you.
OK. I think we're ready to go into the next item. Item number two, multifamily residential. So, Mr. Forrest, is it your recommendation to leave this one alone or to bring that 85% down?
I would leave that alone. I mean, if we wanted to bring it down to 50%, that would be great, but we haven't had anybody complain about this.
OK, we'll just leave it alone then, unless someone disagrees up here. Item number three, commercial, would you say leave it alone?
Yes.
OK. Unless there's input, otherwise, and item number four, leave it alone?
Yes.
OK. No input. C, is that architectural review piece of if someone wants to do the Cape Cod, right? Is that what C means?
Correct.
OK. And you're saying leave that alone, right?
Yes.
OK. Then I'll let you take us to the next area that you want to go.
All right, that would be at the bottom of page 29, amendments to the code adopted by reference. This is where we talk about recommending deleting section R 13, 313.2 from the International Residential Code and replace it with the following requirements, which starts at the top of page And, yeah, just to give you a quick background on this, I know we talked about sprinkler systems when we were going forward with adopting the 2009 code. I'm glad in a way that we didn't, that we kind of held off on that, because what's been happening is the materials that they've been using to install the sprinkler systems in the one- and two-family dwellings have been failing.
Oh, my goodness.
So they...
Oh, what a disaster.
The majority of the homes that have sprinkler systems in, in the newer homes, they've been using a plastic piping system to run that water through the homes and everything. Well, now that they've been in place for a few years, what they're finding is that when you have a sprinkler piping like that, and it goes from one story to the next story up inside the wall, you have to put a fire-stopping material around that. So if a fire starts in an outlet, it doesn't travel up the inside of the wall and go up to the second floor. Well, there's a caulking material that they make for that. What they found is that certain types of caulking material, when you put it around that plastic pipe, over time causes that pipe to soften up at that connection, at that joint, and fail.
Oh, no. Jeez.
The other thing they found that kind of really stunned me was that apparently every water source, be it city water, well water, has certain type of bacteria in there, that if they go with a PVC pipe, which is the white plastic pipe, and they use that for the sprinkler system, over time, these bacteria in the water reacts with a chemical in the PVC and causes the PVC to fail and crack and break apart. So obviously, the alternative would be to require the entire sprinkler system in the whole house to be done with copper. Well, what we did is, we did a little more research, and through the National, through NFPA, which is National Fire Protection Agency, we went back and relooked at their studies. And what they found was that the top three sources of residential fires, they start in the kitchen, they start in the mechanical room, or they're caused by arson. Obviously, we can't do anything about arson. So what staff's recommend, and let me say, too, just back up quickly, I, we polled several of the surrounding communities, many of them are going to the 2012 code group. About half of the ones we talked to are going to delete the sprinkler requirement. About 40% of them are going to leave that in, but they were going to revise that requirement, although their revision was going to be to have the builder and the purchaser of a new home sign an agreement that the purchaser agrees to waive the installation of the sprinkler system. And then there were a couple, I think there was only one community that was going to leave the sprinkler requirement in there. So that being said, what we're recommending to do, knowing the top three causes of the fire, we know one of them's not preventable, what are, what staff's recommending is that in a one- and two-family dwelling shall have fire sprinkler suppression devices installed in the following locations: within six feet of the kitchen, principal cooking devices, and any accessory cooking devices in the structure; number two, in any mechanical room containing a central heating device, water heater, and a clothes dryer; and number three, in any location other than the above where a clothes dryer is installed. So what we're saying with number one, within six feet of your kitchen stove, your oven, you have to have a sprinkler head. Now, what we, and if you have another stove in the basement or somewhere else, you have to have a sprinkler head at that location. And mechanical room, you've got a furnace room or an area in your basement where you've got the furnace and the water heater, typically those are put close together, you have to put a sprinkler head there. If you have a second-floor laundry room and you have a clothes dryer upstairs, you have to put a sprinkler head in the clothes dry, or in that area. Now, you can, the fire suppression system, if we put this type of a limited system in, it can be installed on the domestic water piping, which is copper, for the dwelling, and those sprinkler heads would not be allowed to create a dead end in the system. See, when you've got a water system in a house, you want water to be moving through it all the time, so you don't have a dead end. That water could sit in there, become stagnant at some point in time, you know, it'll mix in with the system, and it'll come out the faucet. But what I thought is, every kitchen's got a water supply, every bathroom has a water supply, plumbers are running copper piping throughout the house to interconnect these systems. In this run of piping, in the kitchen, you run a cold line water up into the ceiling, you put your sprinkler head, you loop that pipe around, connect back into the cold water system, you continue on to the utility room, you run a copper pipe up in, you put your sprinkler head there, you tie it back in, and you continue looping that through the house. You're utilizing the existing system. The cost to install that would be much more reasonable than putting an entire sprinkler system in the house, which may actually require a separate water service. You can run up to five domestic sprinkler heads off of a traditional residential water service, because, again, not like the movies where when you see sprinklers go off, they all go off. Typically, only one sprinkler head goes off at a time, wherever the source of the fire is. Residential heads and sprinkler systems are not designed to put out the fire, they're just designed to slow it down, to give you more time to react and get out of the structure. Again, early warning, smoke detectors.
I like it.
So, that would be our recommendation for that. The other thing is, I mean, it is going to add some additional costs doing that. So I did make a note in here, maybe the city would consider granting a waiver of some of the building permit fee. If, for example, if somebody wanted to put in a full sprinkler system in a house, not for this limited type of system, but if somebody came, you know, I still want to sprinkle the whole house, I think it's a good idea, it's worth the money to me, at that point we could consider maybe giving him some sort of an allowance on the building permit fee.
OK. I agree with that as well. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, just one question, John. The five heads up the domestic water system is based on one-inch water coming into the house, inch and a half, three-quarters?
One inch.
One inch? All right, thank you.
Any comments before we move on? OK, next item.
OK, 12401B. And again, I'll refer back to the requirement for the fire sprinklers and how everybody at the code hearings got all excited about requiring sprinkler systems in one- and two-family dwellings. You know, again, according to the 2010 surveys, there were 2,800 fire deaths, most of those caused by smoke. So, OK, we want to spend lots of money to put fire sprinkler systems in the house. But while we were doing some research on this, what we found out is that there are over 25,000 deaths every year from slips and falls in single-family homes.
Oh, jeez.
So that leads us to section 401B. "All new and substantially remodeled occupancies in every residential occupancy group shall include the installation of grab bars in all bathtub and shower areas. Grab bars shall be fastened to approved structural framing to allow the required resistance to loading contained in the code." So that's, you know, if, this is for new structures or substantially remodeled, and by definition substantially remodeled is if it's more than 50% of the value of the house, then you're going to put grab bars in the bathrooms.
I think it's important as well.
Well, it's, you know, again, everybody's concerned about fire safety. We have 2,800 deaths a year, we have over 25,000 a year from slips and falls.
Oh. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I would just like to add, where you have substantially remodeled, you know, it's 50%. If somebody's remodeling the bathroom, that's not going to be 50%, but I think it would be fair to say we should make them put the grab bar in.
I agree with you.
So maybe if we could add that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm in agreement to that change unless anyone else disagrees.
OK, this next item here is one that's been a hot topic of conversation lately, and kind of wondering if this should be a requirement or perhaps a recommendation. But the way it's written right now in the code is, would be a requirement, "All new or substantially remodeled residential occupancies shall use 5/8 inch drywall for interior wall sheeting." Typically, the standard today, most builders use half-inch drywall. 5/8 is a little better product. Again, your higher-end builders typically will always use 5/8 inch drywall, a little thicker, it's a little better sound insulation, has the potential to give you a nicer wall finish. Comments?
Is it more, how much more expensive is it than the...
It could add anywhere from $400 or $500 to maybe, you know, $600, $700.
Oh, that's not, that's not much in the grand scheme of things, is it? Yeah. Oh. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, just to back up what John says, in a 3,200-square-foot house, it costs me $600 extra for the 5/8. And if everybody's concerned about health, safety, and fires, this also makes all the walls in the house one-hour fire-rated also. So you get a couple, well, actually, multiple benefits from it for a small cost.
OK, so I'm not hearing in against, and we can revisit. OK, so I think we're good on that one.
OK. Next thing, quickly, page 31. We added a few clarifications and extra requirements to section 403, which has to do with grading. Added a sentence in number one where they're talking about grading, final grading on a property. We just added the sentence, "and will not adversely affect neighboring properties." That'll help give us a little more teeth when we're enforcing drainage issues that we run into pretty frequently out there. So the sentence, "Grading or draining, or both, should be performed so that water will drain away from the building on all sides and off the lot in a manner which will provide reasonable freedom from erosion and pocketed surface water." That's where that sentence used to end, what we're adding, "and will not adversely affect neighboring properties."
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
And it's the situation there. Is also the ring, the gutters cannot point to the people either?
Downspouts are allowed to go, they can go 50% into a yard.
Not pointing to the neighbors, though.
Well, as long, you know, again, if it's within that 50%, again, unless it adversely affects the drainage.
OK, when we talk about the grade, OK, in this, when you reach it, do you get the document from their grading company that the grading has been completed, or is our engineer actually going out there shooting to make sure to grade in the right position?
No, they're, the contractor is required to have a final as-built topographical survey done by a licensed surveyor or a licensed civil engineer. They're going out, they're shooting, and they're verifying, when they seal that, they're verifying that these are the final elevations out there. That survey is submitted to our department, we forward that to the engineer. When he goes out to do his inspection, he's got that with him. He looks at it, whether or not they shoot elevations out there. Again, it's on an as-needed basis, I don't think they do it very often. But this sentence, we've, there is a section in the stormwater management ordinance that talks about drainage not adversely affecting neighboring properties. We want to bring it out of that, put it in the building code here so that it's in the grading section where it should be, so that we don't have to play 20 questions to try and find the section when we need it, or, you know, steer somebody that way when we're trying to enforce it. So again, downspouts are allowed to empty into a side yard, they can go 50% into a side yard, as long as they don't flood out the neighbor. You might have somebody with a side yard that's 20 feet wide. You might, you have people with side yards that are five feet wide. So again, that's on a, kind of on a case-by-case basis.
Mr. Mayor?
John, as far as the, when somebody's doing an addition or whatever and making the change, or building a brand-new house, whatever, can they raise the elevation half-inch, two-inch? I thought we were putting something in the books that the elevation is here, you're not allowed before, I think it was up to six inches or something, they can make these changes. Have we corrected that problem where that's...
Well, there is a section in the code that we really, I think we left it in there, and what that does is that allows somebody plus three inches or minus three inches when they do the foundation on-site. And that gives up somebody who's building a little bit of latitude if they run into unexpected soil conditions, or if the concrete guy blows it, then he's off by a couple of inches. The foundation height is really immaterial to where the final grading ends up to be. We require the final grading to be, excuse me, depending on the wall covering, four to six inches below the top of foundation is the maximum height that finished grade is allowed to be.
Well, when you're talking finished grade, you're just talking around the building, or, let's say, the property slopes to the back of the property, is that going to be left alone, or are they allowed to raise that? I'll be honest, as far as, I know on my block, everybody's spout points to the middle, towards everybody's homes, but then there's supposed to be a swale to the back, and then once it gets to the back, in between the yards, it's supposed to go to the east of the pond. Well, who's put in the brick pavers, who's been in the pools? I can, I can tell you where the water stops on my block, because it's at my house, but We know that we've had some residents with issues with this type of issue specifically. So to prevent those issues from happening again in other, at other homes, are we addressing that right here? Have we cleared up the language?
We haven't really, because it's, again, swales are typically installed as part of the engineering for the subdivision. Once you get onto private property, depending on the subdivision and if, I mean, a lot of times those requirements to keep those swales clear are contained in the covenants for the subdivision. City doesn't really enforce the covenants. The stormwater management ordinance refers that if you have drainage swales and so forth, you're supposed to keep those operational. But again, it's like you say, people move into a house, they've got a drainage swale in the backyard, the first time we have you, have you... The first time we have heavy rain, they go, "Ooh, there's water in the backyard. I better fill that with black dirt." So they don't realize that doing that, now all of a sudden, two or three houses down the way, a property that used to drain nicely, there's now a dam created. So this is part of the never-ending struggle of the drainage wars between, you know, people that like to alter the existing drainage and the city. We already have stuff in the Stormwater Management Ordinance and in the building code saying you've got to maintain existing drainage ways. We have, on certain occasions, taken people to task on that. Do we find everyone? No.
Well, that's my thing. If somebody moves into the neighborhood, naturally, they want to clean up the yard and everything. They want to, you know, do everything right. Then, like you said, they see, all of a sudden, there's water sitting between his house and the neighbor's house, and he decides, "Oh, you know what? I'm just going to raise mine three inches." Can the residents now call? I mean, are we making it so the resident can call and say, "Hey, this guy just filled in, and now I get all the water"? Can we go in and make them take that three inches out?
If it adversely impacts neighboring properties, we can. I believe there's a section in the Stormwater Management Ordinance that does not require you to get a permit unless you're going to alter your elevations by more than six inches. So by that ordinance, you can allow up to six inches of change in elevation without having to get a permit.
But I thought we were changing it down to like an inch, inch and a half, or something.
Well, again, the city engineer may want to clarify this, but it's my understanding that if that is how the DuPage County Ordinance is worded...
That's the one we adopted.
Well, yeah, ours is actually a little bit stricter. So, I mean, we may be able to make that tweak. That's something we can look into, because I know that's something that's been talked about in the past before. That's a real... Can be a real sticker, because again, the question comes up. I was talking to somebody earlier today, and they said, "Well, that's... You can alter that elevation by six inches before you have to get a permit. Can you alter the elevation six inches every year without having to get a permit?"
Mr. Stefan, would you like to comment? Me too. I'd like to.
Regarding the Stormwater Ordinance, the county was to release, I think, either yesterday or today. I haven't seen which final version they finally adopted, but it will address some of these issues as far as what the area of disturbance really will be and what's going to be allowed, and then at what point they will be required to have a permit. So I'll be able to get back to you shortly. Our intention is to review that ordinance compared to what we have as far as existing, and then get back to you here within the next month or so. So I think we were scheduled for some kind of discussion in a committee meeting in June to review the variances and the changes between the two, and then come back to you. So that is on the plate, where we are looking at it from that perspective, from the new county Stormwater Ordinance.
Thank you. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I was just going to comment on the mayor's comments, which I agree, and I think that we need to just step back and take a look at this and how it's going to tie into the new county, and to look at our stormwater management, and if we have to make ours even stronger than what the county comes up with. After all, the biggest problem in Wooddale is water. Some of these items seem to be in contradiction with each other, whether it's from building the stormwater, and also counterintuitive to what we're trying to do in Wooddale, too. So I'd just say, let's take a step back and address those in order. Thanks.
Okay, next item. I think we're almost through, right, Mr. Forrest?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
One other minor change. We get down to Number B under Section 405, Concrete Piers. We just added a sentence in there. Clarify that. Typically, a deck or a shed, that type of structure built on piers. We never really had any definitive requirement, what those had to be. The next page, 32, Section 407, Garages. Letter B. What we are going to require, "The walls and ceiling area of a garage attached to a dwelling unit shall be drywalled with one layer of 5/8 Type X drywall with the joints fire-taped." We've required attached garages to be drywalled for some time, but we've only required half-inch drywall. It has not been Type X. Type X is more of a fire-retardant-treated drywall, so that's typically what you have to use to get a fire rating. So this is, again, just kind of clarifying and saying that if you have an attached garage, you have to use 5/8 Type X as opposed to just regular half-inch drywall. What that effectively does, I'm sorry, what that effectively does is makes the interior of that garage a one-hour rated fire assembly.
Mayor, please.
John, I believe we've taken care of this problem, but any garages shall have a smaller footprint in the home, correct? Because I know we had an issue where the one garage is, actually, the footprint's bigger than the house. So I'm sure that's not going to ever happen again, right?
That's contained in the UDO, correct? There is a limit to square footage and percentage of the yard.
I just wanted to make... I thought so, but you know what? Sometimes...
If we go to page 34, F. This is just an additional requirement and clarifying that if somebody is coming in and they're going to do some major remodeling or put an addition on the house, they are going to have to submit a proposed topographical drainage survey, just like you would if you were building a new house on a vacant lot. Again, that's just so we can try and circumvent some of these drainage issues. We do that now, kind of on an as-needed basis, but this just kind of clarifies it, and it's actually in there as a requirement now.
Alderman Woods?
John, on the one we just discussed, I get the erection part alteration of... So if I remodeled my kitchen, I'll assume that's an alteration, and I'm going to have to get a surveyor come out and do a topographical?
You yourself, yes, you would have to. Anybody else? No.
That's what I thought. Some things never change.
No, we would not require it for just an alteration of an existing.
So will we remove the word alteration?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's pretty much it, unless anybody had any other questions. You know, there were some references in here to adopting the 2011 National Electrical Code with some revisions in there. Again, there are things that that code allows that just doesn't seem to, that we need to go that way. They allow plastic piping and plastic outlet boxes. We want to stay with metal. It's much safer, gives a better grounding system. One, probably one change is that we are going to start allowing contractors and homeowners to use BX, which is the flexible metal wire or piping that has the wire already pulled in it. If that's installed properly, there really are no issues with it, and that may make some of these requirements, like having to put the smoke detectors in, that'll make that installation a lot easier and more cost-effective for people. So we feel comfortable with that. So that's pretty much it for chapters 1 through 9. Again, the next, well, the May 10 committee meeting, I'd like to go over the balance of this so that we can, hopefully by the end of May, have the 2012 Code Group and the revised local amendments adopted by the end of May and get on with it.
Okay, great. Alderman calls?
Yeah, I thought only BX... The electrical code only allowed BX use when you had a motor or something that is going to be detached from another piece of machine, and you're allowed to use BX.
You could... BX was... You were allowed...
Now you want to run it through the... That was old timers. They used to use BX in the old houses, and they used to catch on fire, so...
If it was improperly installed. If it's properly installed and properly grounded and connected, it's fine. I mean, there are a lot of states in the country, there are a lot of counties and municipalities in Illinois that still allow you to use plastic wiring without being encapsulated in any kind of metal protection. We're not allowing that.
All right.
But right now, we currently would allow somebody to use up to six feet of BX to attach up to a light fixture or something like that. So we're already allowing certain lengths of it.
Okay.
And I see it more as being a tool for people remodeling or having to retrofit existing. I can't see somebody coming in and applying to wire an entire house with BX.
Okay, one last question. Alderman Woods?
John, I'm assuming there's a limitation on the BX, but before you answer that, could we... Could we, or does it make sense to have instead of BX, to make it Greenfield, which is the same material, but you pull your own wire through? And I say that because if you put it in, you're able to pull the wire out and change it or add another wire just as you can with conduit, where with BX, if you get a two-wire BX, it's always going to be two-wire. So you can't add. If it's three-wire, it's always going to be three-wire. I think the cost, the time savings, all the other things are the same, and I think that, you know, the majority of electricians would agree that Greenfield's probably the better material in this application. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll go over that with our electrical inspector, and we'll bring that back on the 10th.
Okay, so I believe we resolved in chapters 1 through 9 mostly everything and agreed on modifications, except for the reinspection occupancy timeframe wording and how we're going to handle that when we post that it needs to be inspected. The tweak the elevation? So, Mr. Stefan, do you think that in the process in May, that we'll be able to work out that elevation with DuPage County and then get it into this code?
Excellent.
Excellent, thank you. And then, now the BX conversation, would it be the third? Does that match your notes, too, Mr. Forrest, on some of the action items and that we've discussed? Okay, and I do thank you for taking us through your changes and ensuring that we've looked at everything. Thank you. And with that, then it closes out item number four for the Local Building Code Amendments, chapters 1 through 9. Items to be considered at... Mr. Murmas?
Just a quick note on the items to be considered. Item 5B, slot machines, that should read video poker, and that should actually be under Public Health and Safety. It was a typo on the agenda.
Gotcha, okay. So items to be considered at future meetings, approval of Wooddale Station, that'll be in May, and we're going to delete item B in its entirety, and it can be added to Public Health and Safety. And is there any items wish to be added to future meetings? Make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? And then we'll go right into Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary Committee.
Go, Joe, go.
Okay, all right. Public Health and Safety and Judiciary Committee. Call to order. Road call, everybody is here that was here for the last meeting. So I'm making a motion... Oh, to approve the minutes of meeting of April 12th. Do I hear a...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Report and recommendation of an ordinance for the disposal of city-owned property through public supply surplus. This is bicycles, everything, right? That you had, anything that's in a city that has to be...
No.
No, this is just for one elliptical...
Just the two cars.
No, this is just for one elliptical station down in our fitness center that we're looking to get rid of.
Oh, that's right.
We did go out and purchase a new one, because this one had failed several times, so... Just looking to be, have the authority to sell it on a public auction site to get some money back, money back for it.
All, I make a motion?
Second. Forget it, you already did it.
No, that's all right.
You made the motion, he seconded it. I was going to make a motion.
You got a question?
No, I was going to make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Report items to consider for future meetings. Has anybody got any items for future meetings?
Just the slot machines need to be... Video poker needs to be added on there.
Video poker? Well, okay. Video poker has to be a... We'll have to talk about that. And anything else? I call... I make it adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's...
I'll call the Public Works Meeting Order, make them take a note. The same people are present. I need a motion... I'll make the motion, approve the minutes for April 12, 2012.
Second.
I have a second. Corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Polls, motion carries? Item number four, report and recommendation, contract award to MQ Construction Company not to exceed $1,847,282 for a 2012-2013 water main replacement. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns?
What was this?
This is... Go ahead, Mr. Coles.
What was this? Main, water main replaced?
It's all four. There's four water mains.
Four, oh, all right, okay. Four.
Am I right?
Correct, yes, it is. Four water mains, Prospect, Sunnyside, Central, and Charmille.
Okay, I... All right.
So I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Polls? Motion carries? Item number five is report and recommendation for treatment plant tree relocation. We were out there at a dedication the other day. There was a lot of talking about relocating some of those trees. So, John, you want to give us update on that? What, if you got info?
Absolutely. As you know, we had the groundbreaking ceremony this past Tuesday. During that, there was a discussion about some of the existing trees that were slated for removal during Phase 1A. Roughly, we have about 38 pines or crab apples that are due to be removed in conjunction with the project. If we add the administration building, you're talking about another four or five trees, I think three of which are birch, and then a few more pines that would be eliminated by that. So we're upwards of 45 trees. There was some discussion about moving those trees to various parts of the city. Obviously, the crab apples could be moved. The pines, as far as a parkway tree, a pine is not a suitable parkway tree for obvious reasons. We do have other areas in town where we could move them. Unfortunately, most of those areas in town are rather low, holding water retention pond sites, things like that. Traditionally, pines don't do fantastic in that sort of growing environment. We do have fringe areas that we can put them in, green space, et cetera, et cetera. Again, 45 trees is a lot of trees. Most of the crab apples are low-growing. Those can go along, for example, just spitballing Irving Park Road under the power lines. They're a low-growing tree, don't grow up into the wires, may be a good possible location for some of those. Of those trees, some are in good condition. A couple of those pines are at their maturity. Several have died off over the last couple of years. I'd say we would want to evaluate each tree, what legitimately should be moved versus what should just be cut down and their condition. I know that some of the evergreens that were out there, I noticed, I had staff go out and take a look at them. Some of them have the pine sawfly, and they're actually eating some of the needles off of them now if they're in declining condition. Not that a sawfly can't be sprayed with insecticidal soap and gotten rid of, but again, we need really take a hard look at what we want to move and what's a viable species to move and what is the best bang for our buck. So let me get to the point. It's about $500 a tree to move with a tree spade. Um, the first tree is seven hundred dollars, each tree additional after that's five hundred, so if you average it out, it's about five hundred dollars a tree. If we're going to move all forty trees, you're talking about twenty thousand dollars. That's getting fairly pricey, um, in, in my estimation. So again, um, we were asked to bring some information back on prices of moving trees, locations, trees, number of trees being removed, um, so I kind of gave you all that. So I'm kind of looking for some direction on, do we want to investigate moving some trees? Do we want to evaluate them, see how many are really truly viable options for moving, and then come up with a game plan and allow staff some discretion to put them other areas in the city?
Mr. Woods?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, direct, uh, Mr. Kramer to look at the trees, view which ones are salvageable, along with, uh, I believe it's Kramer Tree Service, uh, which ones will be able to move and which ones make sense to move. And the reason I say that is, we are a tree city, uh, we are working on streetscape issues, and seems a shame to waste all those trees. Now, I know we can't save every one of them, uh, based on some of the things that John said, but certainly we'd take a look and see what we could save. That is my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, can it... Alman Roy Wesley?
The, the other trees, John?
Sorry.
The other trees that, that we're not going to use or whatever, about the, uh, other taxing, but like the Velo to Rightask or Ben'sville, at, at their expense, to pick them up, could you contact them?
Absolutely, I can put a few phone calls out and just let them know that we may have some, some species available. Um, I'm going to take the good ones, obviously, so they may get the part quality ones, but sure.
I mean, it's just working with other, other towns, so...
Alman Shaw?
And if you do cut any down, please don't leave them at the curb.
Go ahead, Frank.
John, this cost of five hundred dollars a tree, that includes what exactly, they're taking it out, planting it?
Kramer?
Basically, how a tree spade works, they'll come out with the tree spade, they'll go to a location where they expect to put the tree, they'll take a plug out of the ground of similar size of the tree that they're pulling out, go over, drop the plug, take the specimen tree, move that to its new location, put it in the ground. Really, that's the only true restoration. Once that plug goes back in, it's like a jigsaw puzzle, they take one piece out, put a new piece in. That other plug, when that goes in from the other spot, traditionally, that's a little rougher, and that needs to be graded and some other things. That is a city responsibility, but it's obviously, since most of the area that we're disturbing is going to be the new treatment plant site, there's not a lot of expense with that, because it's not going to need to be restored. The area where the trees are going, other than some marks where the truck backs up and actually drops the tree at its location, there may be some, um, ruts to restore there. They traditionally use plywood, planks, um, some sort of matting to drive the truck on, but again, if, that truck's like a cement mixer, so it, there's a considerable amount of weight, especially with a loaded root ball on there, you're upwards of fifty, sixty thousand pounds, so if the ground's wet, you may have some restoration there.
Okay, so there's a motion, there's a second. Uh, the question I have on, in that motion is...
Mr. Kramer?
Uh, a, a, as the city, uh, as the city manager pointed out, we may have to move rather quickly on this.
That, that was my discussion right now, um, for him to bring it back to council, we have a contract signed with the treatment plant people already, and earth is ready to move in this week to start leveling that dirt out, out over there and start moving on its treatment plant. So my concern is, I would, I would recommend in the motion that this, we leave it up to staff to do whatever they have to do with those trees, and let them make the determination what trees go and where they go, and, and contact the other towns. Mr. Man?
From what John was saying, we're not going to use all the trees, and we might not even go over the ten thousand dollars that the manager is allowed to spend at his discretion, so it's not going to slow anything down. They, they have, staff has direction.
Kramer?
You had to hand up, good.
Yeah, as, uh, the mayor pointed out, it's probably best, you know, we have a ten thousand dollar limit, we've got money in the budget for tree removal and replacement that we could use conceivably for that, um, as well as the treatment plant, plant funding as well. So, um, again, if, 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 if it's acceptable, if we could use up to our ten thousand dollar threshold, that would be, uh, um, acceptable.
Will the motioner agree to cha, change the ten thou, up to ten thousand?
I'll modify the motion to, uh, not to exceed amount of ten thousand dollars.
Will the secondary agree?
I'll second.
Alman Roy Wesley?
Mr. Kramer, you just mentioned about the ten thousand dollars that is in the budget. Doesn't that come out of sewer treatment fund? Or are we just coming to a general fund on this?
Mr. Kramer?
In the budget for the sewer plant, there's a removal cost in there of those trees. Obviously, the replacement cost far exceeds the removal cost, so whatever trees we deem not to be movable, we could basically take out of the treatment plant, but if we're physically moving them somewhere, I'll leave it up to you if you would like to include it in the treatment plant, or take it out of other, uh, city funds. It's up to you.
Well, my understanding is, anything to do with the sewer treatment plant is coming out of sewer treatment plant fund, not general fund, or anything else in the budget. My understa, am I missing something here?
Our understanding would, if I'm mistaken, with the treatment plant, it was our, our, our contract stated removal of the tree, but now we're moving them to a different location. So I don't know if we could technically... Go ahead.
The only comment I have is, once you move them to a street tree or a street location, they're not a treatment plant site amenity anymore, they're now a parkway tree or a open green space tree.
That's what I'm saying.
My only definition change.
In that case, then the, then the general, then that money from, from the sewer treatment plant should go back into the general fund, some, or wherever you're taking it from.
Mr. Woods? Yeah, um, question to the city manager. I know that we had money in streetscape, could we use some of the money in that budget? Some of the money is going to be covered by credits from wastewater treatment plant, because it's less trees for them to take out, uh, and, and the balance, could that come out of streetscape then, since they will be going to decorate the streets?
Yeah, I'm not worried about the ten thousand, we're concerned we take it out of there. There's a couple of funds that, you know, are possibilities, that we have more than ten thousand dollars left over, so, I mean, I'm not concerned about that at all.
There's motion, there's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, I have a future meetings, does anyone have anything? Nope. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, motion carries. Thank you.